...meeting of the Pittsburgh City Council. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves to the record now by standing and stating their name and city of residence. Seeing none, at this time, I would ask that all electronic devices be placed into silent mode.
Good thing they told me.
Vice President Van Hazinga, would you lead us into the flag?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Here.
Counselor Walsh?
Here.
President Zarella?
Here.
Counselor Boishman?
Right here, President.
Counselor Kuchar?
Here.
Counselor Craken?
Here.
Counselor Cruz?
Here.
Counselor De Natale?
Here.
Counselor Fleming?
Here.
Counselor Green?
Counselor Schultz?
Here.
We have ten members present.
Thank you very much. The public had been advised to contact the Clerk's office regarding any comments that need to be made via Zoom. We do have two Zoom attendees. I'm going to ask each of you to unmute and let me know whether you are here for the public hearing. If you're here for something other than the public hearing, then you can identify yourself for the record by name and city of residence and the agenda item on which you wish to speak, and you can speak on it now. If you are here for the public hearing and you have the time to stick around for the public hearing, I would suggest that you hold your comments until then because you will be given a chance to speak at that time. So first, Ms. Yadlin, I'm going to... There we go. I've given you permission to speak. If you could unmute yourself and let us know if you're here for the hearing or for something All right, I'm going to assume either here for the hearing or just here to observe. Oh, are you... Do we have you now?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm not here to... But you're here for the meeting.
Can't hear.
We can't hear you, I'm sorry. I can hear that you're speaking, but I can't hear what you're saying.
I'm here to observe the meeting.
Okay, certainly. Welcome. I'm going to just take you off speech then, if that's all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Normandin? Are you also here to observe or here for the public hearing or on some other matter? You are currently muted. You will have to unmute yourself.
And office is going to be...
Yes, I am here to observe tonight.
Okay, certainly. Welcome.
Thank you. ...the U.S. economy, and again, we are thirty-five days out from the presidential election.
All right, so we have no one else in attendance remotely. If there is anyone here in the audience who either is here for a matter other than the public hearing or who will not be able to stay for the public hearing and wishes to comment on that matter, please approach the center podium, identify yourself by name and city of residence and the agenda item on which you wish to speak. Seeing none, we'll proceed to our announcements then. The next meeting of the Widowed Helping Widowed Support Group will take place on Thursday, October 3, 2024, from 4:00 until 5:30 p.m. in Room 205 at the Pittsburgh State University Recreation Center, 130 North Street. Kelly Lynn and Bernie Schultz will co-facilitate the meeting. Author Grant Liera will discuss his new book, Finding Fanny, at the Pittsburgh Historical Society, 781 Main Street, in the Phoenix Building, on Saturday, October 19, 1 p.m. This is the history and love story of Pittsburgh's Fanny Woolocott-Johnson, her husband Dean E. Johnson, and his second wife Janet Louise Murphy. Fanny was the younger sister of Pittsburgh Mayor Alfred Woolocott, who is also the great-grandfather of the author, who also is related to two other Pittsburgh mayors. The program is free to the public and is part of the Pittsburgh Open Studios Weekend Celebration, taking place October 19 and 20, 2024. For more information, please contact the Pittsburgh Historical Society at (978) 345-1157, or email at director@fitchburghistoricalsociety.com, all one word, or visit www.fitchburghistoricalsociety.com. I'll also note that the author would love to hear from anyone in Pittsburgh who has memories of his father PJ Woolocott or his grandfather, his great-grandfather Alfred, or any of his other ancestors. The Stratton Players celebrates their ninety-ninth season and invites you to audition for every Christmas story ever told and then some, directed by Chelsea Patrisse. A small troupe of actors is all set to perform a recitation of a Christmas carol for the umpteenth time, when the two of them decide to shake things up. They drag the third member of their trio unwillingly into a fast-paced madcap romp through almost every Christmas story ever told. Auditions will be at Christ Church, 569 Main Street, Pittsburgh, on Thursday, October 3, this Thursday, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. Any and all genders and adults of all ages are welcome. Rehearsal scheduled to be determined once cast, and you can RSVP, strattonplayers, S-T-R-A-T-T-O-N, players, at gmail dot com. And lastly, the Thurston Consort will be at the Forest Hill Cemetery, again, on Saturday, October 5, at 2:00 p.m. This is free and sponsored by Friends of Pittsburgh Cemeteries. Next up, we have the report of the Committee on Records. Counselor Walsh?
Thank you, President Zarella. We've reviewed the records, and they appear to be in order.
Make a motion, will you, second?
I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, the report of the Committee on Records is approved. We have five new communications from Her Honor, the mayor, three new appointments. Gary Withington as a member of the Board of Parks Commissioners for a term to expire April 1, 2029, Gary Withington as a member of the Pittsburgh Water-Wastewater Commission for a term to expire February 1, 2026, and Mary E. Self as a member of the Pittsburgh Historical Commission, term to expire October 1, 2027. We also have the reappointment of Liz Murphy as a member of the Pittsburgh Cultural Council, term to expire October 1, 2027, and Keith Cheno as a member of the Pittsburgh Historical Commission, term to expire October 1, 2027. Those will all stand referred to the Appointments Committee. Report of the Finance Committee. Finance Committee met September 25. I chaired in lieu of Counselor De Natale, and we took up two items. 17224, an order that there being hereby is appropriated the sum of $37,800, same to be charged against the tax levy and credited to police maintenance of building, repair, and care. That was unanimously adopted. 17324, order that the City of Pittsburgh hereby approves the expenditure of grant funds in the approximate amount of $18,963.57 received from Pittsburgh State University and originating from mass development to fulfill TDI in-town commitments made to fund programming, marketing, and needed repairs at Mill Street. That was first unanimously amended for clarity to add a comma and the word "and" after the word "made," and then was unanimously adopted as amended. Counselor Boishman?
Mr. President, I'd like to know if we can take these out of order, if we can have individual votes on 172 and 173. I have some questions on 173.
If I don't see any reason why not, do I have a motion then on 172?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the recommendation of the Committee on 17224. If there is no objection, it is unanimously approved. 17324 is before the council. I'd just like to request, Counselor, that we not have a rehash of things that were already discussed at the committee.
Mr. President, there's eleven councils here tonight. There was only three of us at the meeting, or four, so I think they ought to hear what I have to say. I think it's very important.
You certainly can. I'm just going to somewhat tightly restrict repetition and debate on matters that were already debated. You can say your piece, but if you start to repeat things, I'm going to have to cut it off because we can't have a committee meeting and then another committee meeting in front of the whole council.
I'll do the best I can.
Perfect. Go ahead, Counselor.
The reason why I asked this to be pulled, we get $19,000. I feel that it says, if you read the headline on this, it says, "Need to Repair the Mill Street." I believe that we should have a decorative fence on the stone wall to prevent people from hanging around and sitting there, and that's why I pulled this. I think we should get a commitment from somebody higher up to put the thing up. We're spending a lot of money downtown. We're spending a lot of time and energy downtown, and it's going to go to waste if we don't address these problems. And I know Counselor to my right, he said, we're talking about... We've been talking about Main Street for ten years since I've been on the council, and for ten years we had the same problems back when I first started, and ten years later we're talking about the same problem again. And I think it's time that we address the problem. It's kicking a can down the road about people hanging around doing nothing. I'll say this. When I went on strike and we formed our picket line, they told us, "Keep moving. You can't hang around." What's the difference between guys striking and somebody hanging?
I can't speak to what advice you were given when you were striking, but...
It's still that same way today.
So...
So...
Certainly, Director Murphy, you can add your input if you would like, if the Counselor's done. I don't want to take the floor away from you.
No, I'll get the young lady, Chuck.
Go ahead.
As much as I would love to be able to make a commitment to Counselor Boishman, and I really would love to be able to do that, because I understand where you're coming from, I don't feel like it would be responsible for me to make that commitment. I don't know enough about the situation. It's not my decision to make alone. DPW, other folks would be involved. We need to look at what other needs there are and balance those. Is that a higher priority than fixing, say, the murals that are falling apart on Main Street? I understand that some of that is subjective. It's opinion, what's a higher priority and what's not, but what you're asking is for me to make a commitment to do something specific without any understanding of what it will cost, whether or not DPW is on the same, is willing to also accept that and install it. You know, there's just a lot of other decisions that have to factor into this. And how would you feel if we did that and then we put a public bench right there?
If you put a public bench there, you put a public bench. But bear in mind, Liz...
So what, why does it... I guess that's my question, is why does...
Bear in mind, Liz, let me explain something. I'm no young chickadee here. So I've been around for fifty years. Well, let me tell you, Mr. Counselor, if you weren't that young...
Counselor, you surrendered the floor.
Oh, well, I'm responding to her question.
I know, I know, but this will... You can request to speak again, but first of all, please request, and second of all, this will be your second bite at the apple.
We better slow down. Go ahead. I had to finish. I had to finish. Go ahead.
I think that was... Thank you.
I'll wait till everybody else speaks.
Does anyone else have any comment on this matter? For myself, I'll just say, if anyone wants to see the debate that was had, watch the Finance Committee meeting.
Move to accept 17324.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Do I have an objection?
I have an objection.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposition? One in opposition. Motion carries nine to one. Report of the Public Works Committee, Counselor Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Works met September 24. We took up three items. The first one, 168-234, was amended to strike out investigate water runoff and is now Counselor Andy Kuchar to install an apron and a berm at 160 Sticky Road to stop the water intrusion, to stop damage to the property. That was held at the request of Commissioner Erickson, who would like some more time to investigate the property. The next item was 169-24, Counselor Paul Boishman on behalf of Kyle Glenny at 133 Heard Street to install a berm that has deteriorated over the years, which is now causing flooding, onto personal property that was granted unanimously. And then 178-24, City Counselor Bernie Schultz on behalf of Roseanne Adarizio of 84 Newton Street to install a berm to replace a previous berm located at this address many years ago. That, in our agenda, it says granted as amended. Correct me if I'm wrong, if anybody in the Public Works Committee can remember, I don't believe we amended that at all. I believe it was granted unanimously as is. Counselor Schultz, I think, agrees with me, so it was just granted as amended. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the floor. Granted as amended.
Make a motion, will you, second?
I have a motion and second. Any objections? Seeing none, passes unanimously. Now we have the public hearing on 18324. This is the ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on large-scale ground-mounted solar voltaic facilities. I now declare the hearing open. Is there anyone... I don't believe we have anyone who is specifically presenting this matter. So I will start off by asking for questions and comments from counselors. I know we already sort of debated this and had to renotice it, so if there... Is there anything new that anyone has to say on this matter? All right, so to the general public, anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the petition, please approach the center podium, identify yourself by name and city of residence, and you may speak for not more than two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Justin Emma of Gloria Ave, Pittsburgh. It's a petition, 181-66A and B, because that's not what you stated. I just want to make sure we had it right.
181-66 is the ordinance section, but the petition is 183-24.
Okay, so we would, on behalf of the South Street Neighborhood Group, we'd like to speak in support of this petition. This petition will be temporary. It'll benefit all the citizens and wards, and allow time to plan and address the effects of large-scale solar development, as well as enacting zoning changes, which will protect our natural resources and our neighborhoods. We have come to realize that unchecked large-scale solar development is not beneficial. Trading the income derived from solar development is not a fair trade-off for the loss of forests, farmlands, and other natural resources, and does not protect our neighborhoods from intrusion. A community should be able to make a statement regarding how their community is developed. Local zoning is the best tool at our disposal to do so. We urge you to approve this petition. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? In favor?
Good evening. My name is James Wagner. I live at 58 Peppa Road in Pittsburgh, and I don't recall the exact number of the ordinance, so I'm speaking in favor of the moratorium. Let me get to my notes real quick. Thank you.
No problem.
So, yeah, basically, I wanted to preface that I am, you know, I'm actually pro-solar and renewable energies, and I also get that people have a right to do what they want to do with their property. You know, it's their property. But mass solar and green initiatives, you know, the laws weren't intended to build, you know, they weren't... Green initiatives weren't meant to be built in neighborhoods. It destroys, excuse me, at this industrial scale, in the middle of a residence and neighborhood. From the perspective of myself, I'm going to get, you know, it's personal, it'd be my backyard, so right now it's a nice woods, you know, and then they clear the woods, it's going to be basically just the quality of life will suffer immensely, just for me personally, as well as the dozens of other people. You know, honestly, I think about it almost every day, because that's how much it means to me. Dozens and dozens of property values will plummet significantly, which will severely impact the people who have invested their properties for decades. The result is a deterioration of a wonderful neighborhood that Pittsburgh can't afford to lose. A couple other problems as a whole for the neighborhood is the air quality will suffer due to the dump in Westminster, Pittsburgh Line, the Grief Paper Factory, with less trees to block the CO2 and block the winds. It will increase a stench that is not good. Looks like about thirty seconds left. During the heat of the summer, with less trees, it will be, the neighborhood will... Temperatures will rise. Less trees in the city is not a good idea for Pittsburgh as well. Lastly, just touching up on just the wildlife impact, you know, I just, yesterday I saw a few deer. I see hawks. I hear owls at night. You know, it's a nice neighborhood. Yeah, and that's pretty much where I'll wrap up today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the petition?
I got up slow, so it wasn't opposition. My name is Mike Kuchar. I live on Sheldon Road in Pittsburgh.
So, sorry, you said this is not in opposition?
No.
This is in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure we market that.
I have a question, and it's more geared towards Counselors Kuchar and Fleming. Does this moratorium, how does it affect projects that are already in the works, like Mad River?
So, it's already been... We can't actually answer it during the...
Okay.
...public hearing, but we can discuss that when we debate.
Yeah. Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in favor? Anyone speaking in opposition? If all have been heard, I now declare the hearing closed. The matter is before the council, but at this time, I would also like to ask the unanimous consent of the council to take the ordinance itself out of order. We have it listed twice on the agenda, once at the public hearing and once at the very end. I'd like to make sure those are consolidated so that we don't end up addressing it twice.
So moved.
Thank you. Any objection? Okay, so, we have it before us. I know Counselors Kuchar and Fleming, if you would like to speak first to address the question that was addressed to you, either one of you may.
Okay. So, Mr. Kuchar, thank you for your question. You know, the way I'm reading the law and the ordinance, Mad River Solar has already been approved and is in, you know, in current development. This would only affect things moving forward, such as the Shea Street development, as well as any other developments that would be moving forward ahead of this. Unfortunately, the damage has been done in your neighborhood, hence why there has been such an outcry, and both Counselor Fleming and I see the issues in your neighborhood and wish to prevent it going forward.
Any further questions or comments from counselors? Counselor Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just, I'd like to commend the Shea Street Neighborhood Group for the work that they've done. Their organization, their determination, their passion has been really nothing short of inspiring in the work that they have done to get us to this point, and they should be incredibly proud of that work. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the floor.
Thank you, Counselor. Actually, I'd like to second that, both in the sense that this group has been both organized and persistent, but also very level-headed about this. You know, I've seen groups that are passionate about a cause come to the council, and it's fine. People get worked up about things that matter to them, but the ability of this group to keep things on an even keel, to present things in a way that doesn't, you know, leave those of us up here feeling like we are sort of under siege, has been, I think, both much appreciated by myself, and I suspect all of my colleagues, and also, I think, beneficial to the cause. It's a lot easier to sympathize with and absorb this sort of information when it's presented in an easily digestible, calm manner. So, kudos, and, you know, I hope that we can provide what is needed here. On that note, I will mention that because we had this inadvertent delay in getting this passed, I am going to be reaching out to counselors in the following days to potentially schedule a special session for a third and final reading, so that we don't have to wait an additional two weeks to get this on the books. Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and second. Do I have any objections? All right, it is unanimous to pass this ordinance through its first reading, and as noted, we will take further steps as they become feasible. There is one step left before this becomes final. We have three finance orders. If there is no objection, I'll waive the reading of those orders, and they will stand referred to finance. We have an order 18224, authorizing the city clerk to notify the voters of the state election on Tuesday, November 5, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Did you have any... Did you have anything that you wanted to say, or just, it's pretty simple, but...
No, we're all ready to go. Early voting is fourteen days. It'll start October 19 and go to November 1 at City Hall, 718 Main Street. So please come, vote early, get ready for the fun time.
All right.
What's your approval?
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any objections? All right, unanimously approved. We have an ordinance in final reading, 17524. This is the recreational and snow vehicles ordinance. If I'm not mistaken, we have received some updated language from the legal department since we put this through first reading. I don't have the full language here in front of me, but I know it's gone to all of us. Can I have a motion to amend, to reflect... Thank you, Counselor, but actually, I think rather than reading it out unless anyone wants me to, I'd just like to entertain a motion to amend, to reflect, the most recent communication from the legal department, the language of which will, of course, be posted with the city clerk...
So moved.
...for public perusal.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and second for the amendment. Any objections? Seeing none, it is now before us as amended.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and second to pass this through its third and final reading, to be enrolled, ordained, and advertised. Any objections? All right, it is unanimous. 07824, this is an ordinance essentially to correct a numbering error that we made when we changed the snow ban fine to $100. I would like to entertain a motion for suspension, because it makes no sense to send this to either Public Safety or Legislative Affairs just to correct the numbering.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Is there... I have a motion and second to suspend the rules on 07824. Do I have any objection? Seeing none, it is before us. Before we take a vote on it, I would just like to note that I met today with the treasurer members of the Police Department and the parking supervisor, and we did note that there are a few additional modifications that will need to be made to our parking fines and ordinances in the near future, but they are far enough afield from what was noticed in the agenda that I would not recommend making them as an amendment to this ordinance. Counselor Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for my own clarification, I voted against this initially. Am I just voting to amend the language, or is this redoing my vote of yea or nay on the entire ordinance?
No, this is just to amend the language to make sure that the numbering is not duplicative for the purposes of actually filling out the citations. Thank you, Mr. President. This does not affect the substance of the ordinance. Thank you. Counselor De Natale?
Because I voted against it too, and this, the language is already law. The $100 is already law. This is just editing the draft that's already in the books.
Right, and it's actually not even changing the part that has the $100.
Yeah, right, right. Yep.
We just basically messed up renumbering the list when we added an... Do I have any motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to move the amend...
No, the... No, this, the whole ordinance that we have tonight is an amendment to the existing. So I have a motion and second to pass this new 07824 ordinance through its first reading. So I have a motion and second to pass this new 07824 ordinance through its first reading. Do I have any objections? Counselor Cruz, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In opposition? One in opposition. Motion carries nine to one. And that will conclude our business for the evening.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adjourn, seeing no objections. We are adjourned.